We're going to call this meeting of Lawrence County Commissioners to order. Would all plead your minds for the Pledge of Allegiance and afterwards remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Commissioner Spielvogel, would you lead us in the pledge?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, Carol, let's all roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Here.
Here.
Carol Jane, we're good to see you back at the courthouse. Any good health?
Yes, thank you.
But Rich, I believe you have a Treasurers' Report for us.
Yes, I do.
Would you like to approach the bench? I'm messing with you. Come on, come on.
Wow.
Be nice to see you all today. Hey, I'm very happy to provide you with the Lawrence County Treasurers' Report year end of 2019. Collections for the month of December was 1,087,153,33. Year-to-date collections, we ended up at a little over 24 million, 1,72,393. The potential tax collections for 2019, including both interim billings in the spring and the autumn, was 26 million, 1,259,300. Our total collection rate for 2019 was 92 percent. Approximately 2,047,412,50, which consists of 5,300 thousand, one hundred dollars and fifty-six cents. In regards to our 2019 tax relief anticipation note, we started off with a tran of 2.7 million at 2.78 percent from PNC. 1.4 million down payment was made on the tran until 2019. That payment saw an interest savings to the county of approximately $1,600. Our tran was satisfied on December 31, 2019 with a payment of 1,358,417,82. For our agent sales, we ended up selling in 2019 13,441 dog license. And for our bear license, we ended up selling 10,791. Is that clear to my report? Any questions?
First of all, thank you for preparing this and all the work you do throughout your service. Our taxpayers
It was pretty close that I had about 2 million, a little over 2 million goes to tax claims and that was Treasury as well too. So it's normally about the 24, mid-24 range.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Commissioner Vogel, do you have anything?
No, thank you so much, Mr. Treasurer. Thank you.
And thank you as well, yes. Always, always consistent together, well done. And I look forward to maybe going with you to the outreach sales, a couple of them.
Absolutely.
Just to see and visit with our
Very much. I welcome that as well.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other parole officers that have any reports for court commissioners? All right. With that being said, we will Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our public comments section. Before we jump into this, we ask that you keep any comments in this realm related to issues at county level. If you have issues at the state level, I advise you to reach out to your state reps, state senators, and other professionals at the state level. At the federal level, reach out to either Representative Kelly or one of our senators if you have an issue for any local issues, you know, those relating to streets, those relating to a police department. We advise you to reach out to your local municipality, whether that be the city, it's one of the communities or one of the boroughs. But that being said, is there any more
You have to understand who I am and why I'm here. The who I think most of the people in this room know who I am. I try to be as brief as I possibly can, but my name is Robert Bono. I am the general partner for Main Street LLC. It is a family business, and the reason I bring up family is that most of us in this room understand the most important work that we'll ever do will be within the walls of our own home. Probably the most second important decisions will be made in the walls challenging people as commissioners. You have a wonderful staff. You have people that I've been able to interact with, whether it be on the assessment board, whether it be the Office of Deeds, and last but, you know, that taxation place, you know, called the Treasurer's Office. We're all kind of like, how are the difficulties going out there? The who I am, basically, I'm no different than any of you. I grew up in the city of Newcastle. I was a South Sider. And oddly enough, I grew up on Friendship Street. It was between Division Street and Home Street. I'm all intelligent to understand what those words imply, so I won't go into redundancy with you. The family part of the business, as some of you already know, we saw after my whatever inaction I know I'm preaching to the choir, but understand my compassion. We must outreach. The word was just thrown out. But I think that beyond outreach, we need to bring in. So many times I've come down there and seen this room empty. Why not talk to municipalities? Why not talk to school boards? Why not talk to civic groups to tell them that this is your home, this is our home. We welcome your thoughts, we welcome your participation. Nobody is too small, nobody is too large. To bring ideas, concepts, and values of positive contributions as family, as friends, of colleagues, you have so many differences of opinion, and that's okay. I've been here for 46 years. I don't know how, but my wife and I still go to bed at night and say goodnight. And you know what it takes to go through those itself. The ideas of what compassion share, the values that you share during the process of making those decisions, having our, your constituents understand that, you know, it's so difficult to come up with a decision. I mean, I'm so tired personally of hearing the word "change." This county, this city was built on a foundation that is astral group. You know, you're going to expose yourself to so much criticism, so many hardships. You've taken on the campaign, you've taken on the election, and then I'm going to try to wrap, but the election process is over for me. As you people know, that I ran as a Democrat, but strongly feel that the partisan system has ended. It's time to get down to work, it's time at Main Street. Please make a personal, I guess, effort to stop down there when she opens the door. It's going to start as a female clothing store to support her in any financial way, any encouragement way. Let's try our best, and I'm not saying that people have not, I'm just saying, please use, be cat, cat, catalyst, okay, in creating this atomic energy, not an incense of a bomb, you know how hydrogen, you know, works. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure I've already exceeded my time, but songs that have impacted me and everybody. Michael Jackson says, "Man in the Mirror." A person who I happened to receive the name of, okay? He said some men have secrets they are and ask why, ask why. I drew things that never were and said, "Why not?" Find faults, find remedies. Now, the other things that come, here we go. Honor, ethics, enthusiasm, transparent, consistent, fiscally responsible, recognize, respect, revitalize.
Does anybody else want to say any words?
Who wants to follow that? Let's just put it out there. Excellent words. Thank you so much.
Thank you. To town.
Motown. Get it right.
One and the same, I believe.
That Motown girl made me feel differently.
Yeah, I'm married to one, so.
So are we for the next 40 years. But Carrie, I think I saw your hand go up.
Thank you very much. I want to say welcome to the board, congratulations.
Thank you.
To Loretta. Congratulations, good to see you again.
Thank you.
So I came today as I mentioned earlier, before the meeting started, I had asked to see a copy of the previous meeting minutes that you will be approving today. Sunshine Law requires that whenever you take action on anything, that the public have an opportunity to see that document, to see that policy, whatever it is that you're going to vote on, to at least have an opportunity to take a look at it, to make a public comment on it before it is approved. Approved, it's much more difficult for the public to come back and try to make a correction, get something into the meeting minutes. So it's imperative that the public have access to those records. The Newcastle News has published an opinion piece also talking about Sunshine Law issues, right to I just wanted to let you know, you'll be seeing more of me. I've learned a great deal over the last five years of Sunshine Law and right to know. It wasn't an education that I anticipated having, though I'd like to share a lot of what I've learned. And again, I really want to encourage transparency. I greatly appreciate that Angelo is now going to, has also made a commitment to come in and videotape all of the meetings, because it's fantastic. A lot of people can't make it down here to your meeting so they can stay at home and watch the meetings. So this is really great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And Angelo, I'll echo you for coming in and your willingness to broadcast these meetings through your social media and through your channels.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. All right, anybody, anybody else? All right, moving on. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, moving through to minutes and correspondence. We have approval of minutes from our January 7th meeting. The only thing to all say is, let's change, let's drop the reorganization from the top of that jinx that motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Up next, we have free discussion of written communications, the first being correspondence from Elwood Specialty Steels dated January 6, 2020, which gives Act 14 notification for a PAG dash O3 NPVES permit for work to be completed in the city of Newcastle. I'm assuming this is for their facilities they're working on improving right now.
That'd be my assumption, yes.
Next is, we received correspondence from Hopco Engineering dated January 2, 2020, giving Act 14 notification for a general permit, utility line stream crossing for a water line for work to be done on a friendship. And the last item of correspondence, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, from the Mallet Company, dated January 9, 2020, giving Act 14 notification on behalf of Mary Beach Quarry for a GP 11, general operating permit for their facility located in Wayne, D.C. But I'll entertain a motion to accept, accept the correspondence.
I'll motion.
I'll provide the second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. We have no proclamations and certificates today, so moving forward to reports, staff reports. Amy and JR, do you have anything?
Just on the agenda.
Perfect. Moving through to commissioner reports, and today we'll start with Commissioner Vogel.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning and welcome to the We're now in our second week as a new board. It's been a productive six or seven days that have gone by since we were all sworn in, and I can assure the residents of the county that they've chosen two very hard-working, conscientious commissioners. And I can attest to that, because I stopped in on Sunday, and Chairman Boyd was here hard at work on Sunday. Also, I'll note that yesterday, Commissioner Spielvogel and I, along with our public say appreciate Loretta taking the time to attend. Mr. Boyd was here, and again, I can assure you, hard at work on some internal matters yesterday as well. So I believe we're off to a good start, a good positive start, and my hope is that that will continue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I'll add to that, they didn't just elect two, they elected three hard-working commissioners.
That's right.
But looks like I'm next for today. You know, I'll add another sentiment starting out, you know, it's been, I think, an eventful two weeks, or, you know, one week and two days. The phrase, you know, "fire hose to mouth" comes to mind. I think Loretta and I have talked, and Dan and I have talked, and it's sort of like a runner's high. And once you get to that level, you know, you're off to the races. And I think we've hit the ground running, and, you know, we're getting to the swing of things, and doing some good work. And we'll continue to do good work moving forward. But I also want to give a brief update. The reason that I was unable, one of the reasons I was unable to go $820 of potential cost savings through those different departments. The smallest cut, proposed cut, is $50 to an overtime line item so far. The largest was $46,327 to a salary line item. But, you know, it's the position of this government to be fiscally responsible and fiscally frugal with all of our tax dollars for all of our taxpayers. That being said, and I think it's important to note, the Treasurer's Office has been receiving some phone calls to this effect, and I'm sure we'll start getting some phone calls too. But until that process is complete, until a budget is presented for the public, the public given 10 days, provide any comments, questions, concerns to us, and until we're able to put on that budget, we don't have tax rate yet. And so for that reason, we're going to have to push the sending out of our tax bills out to, at the latest, March 1st. I'm hoping and praying that it will be before then, but just to allow our, give the taxpayers a reason, I think they're accustomed at this point to receiving their tax bills by now. But the reason is, we don't know what the tax rate will be until we're finished going through the budget and until that's gone through a public process. But I just wanted to note that. But that's all I have for today. Commissioner Spielvogel?
Thank you. And, you know, to note, last week I mentioned levity and having laughter at the meetings, but make no mistake that we realize the task that is at hand for us with changes, not only with the commissioners themselves, but also with, you know, changes that may see as necessary, or, as Morgan said, about the budget, maybe some different deletions, additions in different areas. And as part of that, I think, going back to hitting the ground running, we're each finding our niche at this point in time, so to speak, of where we feel our strengths are at. And it's, you know, it's not etched in stone, it's brand new, but we're fluid with it, and I think we, you know, bounce things off of each other and make sure that we're informing each other of different thoughts that we have or ideas. And I think that's vitally, vitally important. I know one of the things that I ran on was communication, and I think that we are doing our best to communicate with the staff at the courthouse, communicating with our staff. I said to the girls in the office this morning, "Am I getting a passing grade for communicating? Am I doing well?" And, you know, I think that that's part of, it's a whole new process for us. So, you know, it'll take a minute of time, but we are certainly still, we have hit the ground running, and it is like a runner's high, and I think we're making progress. A lot of things are happening, and, you know, I thank Bob Bono for coming in. He's already, but he's always a source of inspiration and wanting to unify and get the job done that we need to get done. So I appreciate that. And we've not ever met, you know, formally before, but I have to tell you that I, as well as everyone else here, we, you can tell that we have somebody here that's already, you know, streaming the meetings, and that's something that I know is vitally important. We may get to some point in time having meetings in the evenings. The meetings will hopefully continue to go on the road, one meeting a week. It's still, it's It's still, it's actually just seven days, so, you know, we're juggling a lot of different things, but yes, transparency is very, very important, as well as the sunshine laws. And I killed a lot of trees in my efforts to get the right to know information that I needed to for my campaign, so I appreciate that fact with the right to know, but, you know, I just say, we're here, we're open to suggestions, to phone calls, to visits, you know, we are your elected officials, Bob Bollano, okay. We are here for the constituents, so we always need to remember that, and thank those of you that are here, and hopefully more people do start to come to the meetings. And we continue to move forward and make those steps, whether they're small ones or large ones, but we'll continue to move forward. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Coming up next, new business. First item on the agenda is from our planning department, a discussion of possible approval to execute documents related to an agreement buying between the Southwest Pennsylvania Corporation on behalf of the Southwestern Planning Commission and Lawrence County Department, and Lawrence County Planning Department, it's a lot of organizations in one resolution, for the amount of $18,750. Amy, would you be able to?
Yeah, absolutely. County, you know, belongs to SPC, and we joined SPC 2003, I think, or late 2002, and ever since then, we have been entering into two contracts with them every year. This is our HPMS contract, which is our Highway Performance Monitoring System. So SPC is required by law FHWA to go out and sample certain segments of the roads in Lawrence County and report back on physical characteristics. They basically pay our department to do that work for them. So this is, this is all revenue coming into the county. The total amount that we get reimbursed cash is $15,000. We're responsible for $3,750 in in-kind services for a grant amount of $18,750. So this does pay for our time, our child, there's a workshop, a conference at Allen Miller's office attendance for training requirements, and this is all paid through this contract, so there's no county dollars involved. And it does come in every year, along with our UPWP, which is a unit of, and that pays for other items that we do out under SPC as well, so.
Actually, I'm very excited, I called Amy yesterday when I saw this item was on the agenda because I thought $18,000 was an expense item, and very excited to learn that it was the office's revenue item.
Right.
Just a question, how much of Allen's time does this take up to, to complete?
Not a lot at all. He usually goes out in the fall and does the sampling, so Allen can usually get everything done within a couple of weeks. It'll take a couple of days here and there in the afternoon, within three weeks he's done it. And then he attends the workshop, and that's usually a two-day workshop. The past few years it's been clear filled, so that would be his time there, his travel, and then there's some expenses that we, you know, including us traveling to Bridgeville to meet with PennDOT, I think, or something as well. But it's a small amount.
Yep.
If I may. Now, given that the county of Lawrence does not own or maintain any roads whatsoever, does Allen focus solely on state-maintained roads or does he focus on roads that are maintained by the local municipalities?
It's all just, it's random segments that FHWA commits to PennDOT, but for the most part, they all are state roads.
Primarily state roads.
Yeah.
We've noted in the past that while the county does not own or maintain any streets or roads, we do own and maintain 27 bridges.
Right.
However, this matter before us does not involve the bridges that we own, is that correct?
No, and then, yes, that's correct. And in the past, up until probably about five years ago, we also did the traffic counts. We joined SPC, the county did their own, Lawrence County, our office did our own, so we were our own NPO. So we would do our planning partners and just work, do the traffic counts, we would do the HPMS, we would do all the unified planning work requirements from PennDOT. Now, since we've joined SPC, that all goes under SPC. We just weren't able to do the traffic counts, and traffic counts have a lot of time, staff time.
Right.
So PennDOT, SPC does do the coordination of the traffic counts for the county now, along with the other nine counties, they do their traffic counts. I think we are, it still does, you know, our HPMS though, because we do, we do get some benefit from it in terms of.
Yeah. Done business.
Carol, what resolution number was that?
Zero one two.
Zero one two.
Number two? Twelve. Oh, twelve. Oh, you, zero one, oh, yeah.
No, you're number 12.
Do you guys need me to say for that?
No, you're free to.
Thank you guys very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, from the Assessors' Office, JR, I think this is a routine resolution here, is discussion of possible approval.
Is there anything routine?
Of an amended Board of Appeals rules and regulations.
Six days on the draw, you learn pretty quick. Well, actually, this is something new because the statute for the Board of Assessment was last year based off of Act 155. Previously, the board was the only one that had that, rules, regulations, or their procedures, but now they have to amend them and change them, and then the commissioners got to, I guess, okay, give them their blessing. So in front of you is an updated version of the Board of Assessment Appeals Policies, Procedures, Rules, Regulations for their. The reason for the change is, within the last couple of years, there's been a lot of controversy on who is allowed to represent property owners, had an appeal hearing. And then we also wanted to add a section about class action lawsuits because they're starting to be more popular in the different professions throughout the Commonwealth. So under the rules of civil procedure, the Board of Assessment Appeals is permitted to give their own rules for class action, instead of following the rules of our common pleas here, they give their own. So the board decided to do that rather than follow the court's procedures. So those are the two major changes, other than some may, grammar, clerks awares that were updated.
And you're amenable to all those other changes made?
Yeah, the board, their first meeting of the year, they started working on them in November. Solicitor Leslie has looked over them and also gave his blessing as well. He was very informative on who can represent property owners. It was pretty much everything, what he said was added into the rules.
Any questions?
No, he answered the one I had.
And I'm sure we had the same one.
All right, would you like us to act on this today?
If you could, yes.
Any objections to do now?
No, we're fine.
All right, we'll make that Resolution 2020 dash zero one three. Commissioner Boyd, just. I'll note that, you know, throughout Joe's tenure here at the county, I think he's been a very solid individual to go to for any needs that the commissioners might have. The mental health department currently runs, is run well, you never hear any complaints coming out of it, you never hear any issues being derived from it. He's respected across the board, I think across all staff, across all department heads, and he has, I believe, the temperament to be able to guide this county and work with the three of us and our department heads and our staff as we conduct more long-term search for permanent replacement for Mr. Gagliano. But I think it's the right move on our end. I think we need to have an interim administrator while we perform a search to handle some more mundane personnel issues, to handle and help out with budgeting issues, to help us out with staffing issues, and to work with the board to improve and increase our effectiveness as we work better to county. With that being said, any, you guys have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hold Mr. Vanasco in very high regard, and I would concur with the comments you made. He's very well-respected, and I believe he has capabilities and the temperament, as you noted, to hold this position. Appreciate that you're both in accord with that, so thank you so much.
And I certainly do agree with that. You know, through the course of the changes at Children and Youth Services, Joe stepped in to handle the reins there, he did a very good job of getting that agency back on track with contracts and personnel issues there, and I know that he will do the same for us as well. And we certainly do need someone to be there so that we're not constantly trying to maybe adjust our schedules for different meetings or different people that might want to feel the need to be. Yes.
All right, and unless there are any objections, I'd like to move on this today, whether you are amenable.
Absolutely, sure.
So we'll make that Resolution 2020 dash zero one four. Need a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I assume Mr. Chairman has to consider the three resolutions that we've discussed.
Yes.
I'll gladly second the motion.
All right, I'm still warming up to the chairman, thank you. With that being said, we have a motion on the table, any discussion? All approved? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. All right, so we'll go through these relatively fast, starting with Resolution R-2020 dash zero one two, which is the approval to execute documents relating to an agreement buying between. Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution R-2020 dash zero one three, this is discussion of possible approval of an amended Board of Appeal rules and regulations. I'll take a motion on that.
So move.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second, any discussion? Carol, please call the room.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And finally, Resolution 2020 dash zero one four, appointing Lisa Vanasco as our interim chief clerk and county administrator. I'll take a motion on that.
So.
All right, any discussion? Carol, please call the room.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think that's all. Noon on Wednesday, January 15, 2020, in this room, and that'll be under the leadership of prison chair person Spielvogel.
Yes.
And I'll talk, this will be closed on next Monday in celebration of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Now, we, another section for public comments, does anyone additionally want to address the audience? We'll start with Debbie, if you have any questions for us.
I have your, may, I have your packet for you.
Anybody else?
I have one question.
Yep.
As far as the policies and procedures of the various boards and councils, are those all kept in one location for review, or where would someone go to the policy and procedure for a department or?
I don't have an answer for that. I would assume they'd go to a department or reach out to our new interim county administrator or our right to know officer.
Assessment, but do report to us, but no, welcome to visit with each of them and ask for whatever documents you might need.
So the Board of Elections, where would I go?
The Voter Services Department, Mr. Allison.
Okay, so they keep those records?
Yes, that's correct. And I might add, if I may, Mr. Boyd chairs the Board of Elections.
Okay.
By virtue of his being, in fact, he chairs the Board of Elections, the Salary Board, and the Retirement Board. County code stipulates that whoever chairs the Board of Commissioners also chairs those three. Prison Board, on the other hand, it's a seven-member board, we're part of it, but the other four members are the President, Judge, the County Controller, the Sheriff, and the District Attorney, and that's, the state dictates that. Basically, a lot of what we do, the state dictates. But as noted, Commissioner Spielvogel, and she was elected to that position, the Prison Board operates. However, once the authorities are in place and up and running, those individuals do not report to the commissioners. For example, the Housing Authority, Lawrence County Housing Authority, it's a five-member board, they're not paid, by the way, those five individuals. We appoint them, and then that's all we do. By law, we don't do anything else. In fact, the Housing Authority is not a county agency, the folks that work at the Housing Authority are not paid by the county, the county does not provide any funding to the Housing Authority. The federal regulations stipulate that it's our responsibility to appoint those five members. So if you needed information on the Housing Authority, you'd want to approach the director of that organization, Mr. DeGeneres. But Mr. Correct, anything else that you might need, the county administrator could assist you.
Okay. Standing as the area open records officer is Mr. Gagliano?
Yes, in fact.
I thought we made that switch to.